Okay, the meeting of the Ascension Parish Planning Commission, March 13th, 2013, will now come to order. Madam Secretary, please note that all members are present. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That brings us to item number four, introduction of staff. Let's again start with our secretary.
Secretary, Secretary.
Item number five, Chairman's comments. I have no specific comments, but I do wish to welcome an elected official, a parish councilwoman, Terri Kinsel. Anything you'd like to say to us tonight? Okay, thanks. Sure. All right. Item number six, public comment for items on the agenda that aren't open for public hearing. Do we have anyone that signed up for the comments? Okay, thank you. Item seven, approval or denial of the minutes of the February 13th, 2013 Planning Commission meeting. What is your pleasure?
Approve. I move for approval.
Mr. Chafisi approves?
Second.
Mr. Calendar, second. Any discussion? Any objection? Then the minute stand approved. Item number eight was a public hearing to approve or deny a family partition. That item was deleted because of a request by the engineer prior to this meeting. Item nine, also a public hearing for a subdivision final plat was deleted from the agenda prior to the meeting at the request of the engineer. So we can go to item 10, a public hearing to recommend approval or denial to the parish council, amendments to the Ascension Parish Unified Land Development Code. First of all, 10A, ordinance SR13-2, revisions to the subdivision regulations in the Unified Land Development Code pertaining to family partitions. Could we have a little background, maybe, Mr. Compton?
Yes, sir. Several months ago, we had several issues that came up before this commission, and the discussion was, do we need to look at those items? In the course of looking at those items, we found a couple other small tweaks that we thought that we could make to this ordinance, and so what we're presenting to unite are those revisions that we discussed and a couple extras. I'm gonna run through them real quick. In your packet, the fourth page, where it starts the proposed section of the ordinance, in section A, we added the words, regardless of zoning classification. Historically, what we've seen is we've seen family partitions that have come before this commission in the conservation zoning category, and in that category, lots have a minimum size of one acre. Well, by adding this language, that allows a family partition in conservation zoning to be done at a half acre. So, we've pretty much done that in the past. We just put it into the code so that people can understand, regardless of the zoning, a family partition is gonna be a half acre. In the next section, what we did is we've reduced...
Wait, before you get to the... There's a lot of deletions there. Is there... Is that, again, just cleaning up language?
Yes, sir, and I'm still in section one, so when I say the next section, section one there. The deletion... The first deletion is an incorrect reference. The second deletion is where we're going from 40 to 30 feet. What we're doing is we're saying that all private access servitudes within family partitions should be 30 feet. We're no longer gonna make them wider based on the number of lots being served. We're gonna make them 30 feet. But the trade-off for that is, we want there to be a surface put in place that is an acceptable surface. And so what we've drafted in there is that it's gonna be a gravel or hard surface road, at least 20 feet in width, four inches thick, on a road bed at least 24 feet. Today, when a family partition comes to you and they've drawn a 60-foot servitude of access, in essence, that's all you get, dirt. There's grass. There's no guarantee that there's ever gonna be a gravel driveway put down or anything. Now, what I did have in brackets in that section under 1A, discuss whether or not this needs to be constructed prior to plat being signed or prior to building being constructed. If we do it when the plat is signed, then we have the responsibility of going out and inspecting it before the chairman signs that plat to ensure that a driveway has been built. The argument from the other side of the table is, well, sometimes these lots are being split. Somebody may be on their deathbed. Somebody may be just trying to give property to their grandkids before they're on their deathbed. I'm not having any intention of building out there anytime soon. I wanna build the road when we start building houses. It gets a little tricky, because at that point, the building department has to inform the planning department, hey, this person in a family partition is now building a house. Was the road ever inspected? You know, it gets into this gray area that we may not actually be able to enforce that if we wait until the building permits are pulled. But I wanted to present that to you, because that is the other side of the coin, that people are gonna argue, we're not ready to build on it, we're just trying to subdivide our property. So if you wanna have a quick discussion on that, I think it'd be good to decide before we move on.
Would there be any way that if someone just had an extenuating circumstance, a deathbed kind of thing, that we could pass it or recommend passing as it is, and your department could make an exception, or would...
Sure. You can always make those exceptions, and the commission can always grant those variances.
In a real hardship?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Is there any way that we could put it on to where it won't... Like, when the plats... Wait till the permit process goes through? Does that make sense?
That's what I'm saying, is we could just change the language that says, instead of when... Instead of when the plat's signed, to do it when the first permit's issued. We can do that. I'm just telling you, logistically, it's hard, because my permit clerks don't know if the house is being pulled on a plat where it's a family partition. They don't know if that family partition was before or after the enactment of this ordinance. They don't know if this driveway is constructed or not, and we'd have to send somebody up before we... I'm just telling you, it starts to get a little tricky if we wait. Not saying we can't do it, I'm just saying that things might slip through the cracks.
Well, right now, Ricky, the language doesn't require that the road be built immediately. It just... Upon subdivision, it just requires that it be built before the first building permits issued, so...
Right. I took the safe route.
Yeah, and I agree with that.
Okay. I took the safe route in drafting this, but I wanted you guys to know the difficulty in that.
Well, I mean, when the first building permit's issued, it means someone intends to build.
Yes, sir.
On one of the lots that's been subdivided. Therefore, it's time to put the screen in.
But ultimately, and I don't wanna cast any stones here, but there are some situations where family partitions are done, and then those lots are put into commerce, and there's nothing in place. There's no gravel drive, there's no... You know, and so these people come to the parish and say, hey, can the parish build me a road? And we say, no, you bought a family partition lot, dirt is what you get.
Is there anything in a proposed ordinance that would stop the lot from being put into commerce before a certain amount of time?
I don't believe that's constitutional. Once the lot's created, you really can't control who owns it, who builds on it, who pulls the permit. Sort of the rub with a family partition. We allow the families to do this, to give them that flexibility to not have to build a road, but once the lot's created, it's created.
Okay, so just to clarify, if we approve this as it is, then we would require that the road be built before we sign the family partition?
The way it's written is before the first permit is issued, the way it's written today.
All right.
It's not before the...
The partition.
We sign the plat.
Okay. All right.
Which means, yeah, there's a... The onus is on the parish somehow to make sure the road gets built, but that... I can see where that is a problem, but I would not suggest that we require the road be built upon making the partition and signing the plat. I don't think that's the right thing to do, so... I like the language that's in here now.
All right. If... I'm sorry. It's okay. If the lot goes into commerce, do the requirements of the family partition go away at that point?
No, sir. The lot was created under that set of rules.
Okay.
I guess I'd also like to ask the question, say you've got a five-lot family partition, and I'm buying the first lot, you know, in commerce, or even a family member, I'm buying the first lot, are we only requiring them to build the road to serve that lot, or do they have to build the whole road? Because that's not specified here, but I would like to clarify if we want to just say, the road up to the lot being serviced as opposed to the entire length of the road.
But wouldn't that put you in the same situation? If the lots behind it get to develop you back the way you were in the beginning?
Well, we're in that situation with the way the language is drafted. I just wanna clarify, if the guy in the middle, Lot Three, comes to build the lot, are we gonna make him build the road to accept... Access the other two, or just until he gets to his lot? Which I think is the fair way to do it. I mean, obviously, he shouldn't bear the cost to serve the other two lots, so I just think I'd like to amend that code a little bit, just to say, constructed to the limits of the lot being serviced. And I think it probably should be in the entire frontage, if it does continue.
Of course, at least in theory, this is all family, right?
In theory.
Okay. All right. Okay, so we're all in agreement then for that portion of it? Any other questions?
Ricky's gonna... You're gonna make a slight revision to that.
Right. What I'm gonna do is, the sentence that starts, "This road shall be constructed the entire width of the lot, prior to the first building permit being issued for any lot being served by this private servitude of access." So, if he's the first lot, he's gotta build it to the end of his lot. If he's the third lot, he's gotta build it from the first to the end of his lot. So the next guy doesn't have to go on that guy's lot to build a road. He built the road the entire width of his lot.
Okay. Good.
And I think that sort of is the fair way to do it.
And that would be a gravel... That would be a gravel road all the way to the end of his lot?
Yes, sir. Or hard surface. I mean, I bought a family partition lot, and it's concrete, so...
I mean, if he wants to put his house more in the middle of his lot, I mean, now forcing him to build that road all the way to the end of it, where he might wanna keep it grass until somebody else builds, you're kinda forcing him to...
I am, but the next guy that comes now has to bear the cost of building across someone else's lot.
Yeah.
Okay.
I sort of think it's... Once again, if it's a family partition, you know, build your road for your peace, and if you're the guy in the middle, you're gonna have to build the road to get to you, but you've gotta build all of your road. The guy on the end's the lucky one, 'cause he just has to have the road to him.
All right. Any other questions about that part of it? Okay, go on with Ricky with the...
Yes, sir. Section B, we're eliminating subsections one and two, because as we discussed, and I think Mr. Calendar brought it up, we weren't getting letters from the Ascension Health Unit. Those are actually required when they do their building permits, and so we just removed it from the plating and family partition process, because they're gonna have to do that when they get to the building permit. Section D, we've removed the language that says, "The plat shall contain an affidavit to be signed by the subdivider verifying that he will only transfer each lot to the designated family member." We require them to put the family members' names on the plats already, so that is just redundant notes. On the next page, section E, we've extended the timeframe for a failing partition from 90 to 180 days, 'cause sometimes these families have difficulty getting the lawyer paperwork done to get all the family members present, so we've doubled the length of time, and we think that will enable some of these family partitions. I mean, we're gonna see one next month that the time expired. They're bringing it back just because they didn't have enough time to get all the paperwork done. So we're extending that one. And then the last line, we're deleting the plat being released to the subdivider and then recorded, because we take care of that. That's part of the fees that we collect. We ensure it's all done in a timely and efficient manner. In section G, changing the words from driveway to servitude of access, and you'll see that throughout the code, since we're changing all of the servitudes of access to 30 feet wide, we're just trying to change the nomenclature and how people talk about it. It's no longer a driveway, they're all servitudes of access. They're no longer 40, 50, or 60, they're all 30. And so that's what some of those changes are about. Section I, I just... That was redundant language, and so I removed it. And then new is section J, and that's the pre-deal agreement. And what that states is, "Any subdivision, in situations where a newly-created lot or lots are accessing an existing private servitude of access, the pre-deal or a pre-deal servitude agreement will need to be completed, signed by all existing owners of the servitude of access, and notarized prior to the plat... Final plat being signed." Essentially, that ensures that anyone who has spent money or is spending money on a private servitude of access has to approve of additional lots being added to that servitude. So, for example, if you live on a private servitude of access, and the guy down at the end wants to subdivide and create another lot out of his, everyone on that private servitude has to agree that they're okay with additional traffic burden on that private servitude of access. That's something we're currently already doing, we're just putting it into the code.
And that's... Those are the changes that you have proposed.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion or questions concerning ordinance SR13-2?
Just one clarification that came up. It's my understanding that we approved a family partition that because of some timing issues, wound up being in the city, and the city was asked to de-annex. And my question was, under that condition, suppose we didn't want it to be back in the parish, can we stop that?
That is more a question for legal. The city doesn't ask us if they can annex property, and I'm pretty sure they're not gonna ask us if they can de-annex property.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Any other questions, discussions? Well, the agenda item calls for us to recommend approval or denial to the parish council. What is your pleasure? Mr. Calendar, move. Oh, I'm... Excuse me. Has anyone signed a card for a public hearing? Okay. Thank you, though. So now, Mr. Calendar has moved that we recommend for approval to the council, ordinance SR13-2.
I second it, but I think that we should also say in the motion that we are gonna make this change that Mr. Compton wanted, that's not written in the ordinance.
Okay. As... Okay, as... With the amendment that Mr. Compton's gonna put in the ordinance, okay? We're all okay with that? Any other questions, discussions? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, that then, ordinance SR13-2 will be recommended to the council. 10B is ordinance SR13-3. It's a fee, revisions to Appendix 12 of the Unified Land Development Code pertaining to fees. Mr. Compton?
So, I'm gonna read straight off the first page, 'cause that's the easiest way to explain this. "The purpose of the proposed revisions is to revise Appendix 12 in the Unified Land Development Code to address an increase in the price of certified mailouts and recordation fees with the clerk of court. In addition, we've discovered that there are four other new fees that we should be charging, but we're not." So, the certified mailout and recordations with the clerk of courts have both gone up. "The revised fees reflect an increase of $1.50 for certified mail and approximately $10 for plat recordation. We've added four new fees for plat revisions, minor and major, for preliminary and final plats that are currently not addressed in the code." So today, if somebody brings us a preliminary plat and they've revised it, we don't have a fee for us to review it, to, you know, go over it, to go back and forth, or for a final plat if they revise it. So we're adding that into our fee structure so that the parish can collect money back on services that we're actually providing. So if you go back to the fee table, the other thing that we did, at the top, it says, "Proposed Appendix," we combined a bunch of the fees onto a single page. Our previous fee structure, the way it was laid out in the code, you had certified mailouts in every category. You had plat recordation in every category, and we've consolidated that. So on the first page, you see revisions to preliminary plat, minor and major are both $100. Revisions to a final plat, minor and major, are $100 plus $10 a lot, and those are the new fees that we're actually proposing. If you skip back six pages, we've created the standard fees page, and so what we've done is we've consolidated all the fees so that plat recordation, bond recordation, developer's agreement, contract agreement, condominium document, all the recordation fees are all now together. Certified mailouts, concept plan notifications, development plan notifications, general implementation plan notifications, specific plan notifications, those are all of our certified mailouts. So those are now in one section. Servitude revocation, we just added that. It was already in the code, but we just added it to the fee table, so it will look like a new fee, but we already... That was already in the code. So what we're doing here is we're asking to amend our fees so that we can collect what we're actually charging, 'cause now, today, when we send a certified mailout, we do not collect enough money to cover those costs.
Just as a question, with the changes in prices, should we tie this to just a set fee at this point, or should we make some kind of motion where it's... It follows the increases of the postal service or recordation fees?
That is a very good point. We had drafted this ordinance, and Mike and I had that discussion, and what I wanted to do was amend the ordinance that's attached behind the first page, and simply add that language, and say, be it ordained that the fees are adopted as follows and have the exhibits, and that the fees shall be no more than 10% of actual cost and adjusted as the clerk of court fees and/or the US Postal Service increase their fees. So it allows us to adjust that rate based on actual cost, 'cause we're not trying to make money on these items, we're just trying to reflect what it actually costs. And so, yes, if you'd like to make your motion to that respect, and we'll add that language into the ordinance.
If there's any more discussion, do you want to discuss that? I'd like to make that motion.
I agree with Mr. Nezo. I think that's a good idea.
Stop us from having to do this every six months. Okay. Okay. Do we have any comment cards for the public hearing? Okay. And one question I may have, Ricky, is, the people that this affects, are they notified in any way that the rates are going up? Just when our minutes are published, or is that the deal?
Generally, yes. When they come in to submit an application, typically, they get with the secretary and ask what their fees are, and I don't know, does anybody ever question the certified mailout fee, or... I mean, it's... It's... The fee is... You know, we're not overcharging, and the same thing with the clerk of court. We charge what they charge us. If they went and did it themselves, it would cost them the same. We just do it, so it all runs efficient and the same.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or discussions?
When will this be effective? Immediately?
It will be effective 10 days after the council adopts the ordinance. So in theory, we are at March 13th. It'll have to go to the council probably the two meetings in April, and it'll be 10 days after the second meeting in April, if it passes.
All right. Okay. Any other questions? Do I hear a motion?
The motion that I made was that we make this change to the fee record, to the fee tables, and make it a recurring fee as it requires, based on the fees that's sent to the department.
So it'll be a reimbursement of the fees that they are charged?
Reimbursement of the fees, with the... With the language that Mr. Compton used, with the 10%.
Okay. Second, Mr. Calendar. Any other questions, discussion? Any opposition? Okay, the motion carries, and that ordinance SR13-3 will also be referred to the parish council for approval. Item 10C, ordinance MST13-5, to consider adding the major street plan to the Unified Land Development Code as Appendix 13. Mr. Compton?
I'm gonna take this one, if you don't mind. But this agenda item 10C is a draft ordinance, and we provided the draft ordinance at your location, at your dais. I apologize for not getting that into your packets ahead of time, but it's a draft ordinance that would adopt a major street plan as Appendix 13 to Unified Land Development Code. This was presented at your last Planning Commission meeting, kinda just as a staff report as an item. I'm prepared to go through that and all the cross-sections, if you would so choose, but we've had this brought to the Transportation Committee meeting in December, also in January, and then before the Planning Commission with a short... With a brief presentation in February, and now before you as a draft ordinance to recommend to the full parish council. But I'll be glad to answer any questions about this ordinance, about the major street plan, also referred to as a functional class plan. Out of all those meetings, and one full presentation to the parish council as well, that recommended to the Planning Commission, two changes have occurred that I would like to recommend through with this that hadn't been made on the map yet. But the first one would be to change the classification of Roddy Road and Joe Savario to an urban collector. It's currently shown on the map as a rural collector, and what that'll allow us to do is to perhaps make it eligible for some federal funding in the future through a various... Couple of programs they have, one of them being the Surface Transportation Program, or STP program, that we're applying for each year for various types of roads. And the second change would be to change LA 621 from a suburban arterial to an urban arterial. The big difference is a little bit right or wide away, right-of-way cross-section, and an ultimate build-out of four lanes as opposed to two lanes. Not that the suburban arterial wouldn't accommodate that, but if you have it set in your plan from the beginning, it's probably a better idea that way. But I'll be glad to, again, go through all the different cross-sections with you. There's about 12 to 13 different cross-sections, three main types of functional roadways, being arterial, being a collector, and being a local street. But I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Chair, I have one comment, one question. Comment is in your ordinance title portion, there's a misspelling of Ascension.
Oh, excuse me.
If you want to fix that. And the other question was along with, similar to what Mr. Nezo said earlier, if we adopt this as part of the plan, if something changes in this, do you have to come back to us, or is it automatically revised as an exhibit?
It would... The exhibit would be revised, but you would have to come back and add that or change that exhibit.
You would?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, one comment. I was at at least one of the Transportation Committee meetings when this was presented to the committee, and I thought you did an excellent job with this, and I congratulate you for taking this step, and pending the result of the public hearing, I would move this forward.
Before I add, all the work was done before I got here. Mr. Compton and Ben Laurie did all the work. I just kinda followed up on it, so...
Well, congratulations to the entire staff, yeah. Well, it's a good job.
Yes. Any other comments, questions?
Question? I guess the assumption I would have is, the higher classification road is based on the volume of traffic?
It's based on volume and based on use, so it's kinda goes hand-in-hand, kinda with density, kinda with how the road's functioning, what it's serving, and the area through which it's going. So, it is a little bit higher, kinda goes hand-in-hand, higher volumes, sometimes even higher traffic speeds. It just depends on what section you're in and what the roadway is.
That being said, is that consistent with the metropolitan area?
With the Baton Rouge metropolitan area, or...
Baton Rouge capital region area?
It would be... It's consistent with the DOTD-type classifications, and pretty consistent with how they do their functional classifications. So it is very consistent with that.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? Do we have anyone from the public who requested to make a comment? Okay. Well, we have proposed ordinance SR13-5. What do you...
I recommend I move that we move this ordinance to the council for approval.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Chafisi.
Second.
Second by Mr. Calendar, that we recommend approval to the parish council for ordinance Any other discussion, any other questions? Any opposition? Okay, motion carries.
Just for clarity?
Yes.
What this ordinance is going to do, assuming it passes, is gonna add this as, I believe it's the 13th appendix in our land development code. So when it's official, you'll get copies to insert into your binder. Then, as we make development code or subdivision regulation amendments, that will reference that master transportation plan, it'll reference Appendix 13 of the Unified Land Development Code. So that's what this ordinance that you guys are pushing forward actually does.
And at some point, this will be edited with the online version?
Yes, sir. Our hope is that we can get all of our GIS data, so somebody could click on a road and know what the classification is, know what the pavement section looks like, know what the schedule is for repair, all those kind of things, ultimately, over time, as we build our technology database, yes, sir, that it's all accessible.
Okay, item 11, staff report.
Okay, so this is going to be a little planning 101. Because at our last meeting, during the zoning commission specifically, we talked about revisions to the PUD, SPUD ordinances and tying that to net developable acres and what are their ramifications and all those things. And I told you that what I would do is I'd bring back something that I worked on a couple of years ago here. I didn't ever think that it was going to go anywhere, and so I put it on a sideburner. But after that discussion, I, I got back to it. And what I wanted to do was just sort of explain where I came from and where we could be going if we wanted to pursue this further. So I'm going to start with your standard development in Ascension Parish. And I'm not saying that there's anything wrong with this type of development. I'm just showing it as a typical example of how subdivisions have been developed historically. So the red line represents your gross acreage of that property. You've got roads, you've got a stormwater pond that runs right through the middle. And the green area represents what was called out as common open space that actually has a lift station tract as part of that. But that's stereotypical of how a subdivision has been developed. And I could show you 1,000 of these. I thought it would be redundant, so I just brought one. And what I wanted to do was say, how do we change the model for how typical subdivisions get developed? You know, if you look in other parts of the country, they've used the PUD ordinance to develop interesting subdivisions, you know, Seaside, or Celebration, or Baldwin Park, or Avalon Park, you know, all these communities that people travel to and they go, wow, why don't we have those here? River Landing in Lafayette. They use the PUD ordinance creatively to develop these types of subdivisions. Well, in Ascension Parish, our zoning code is so flexible that it allows developers to build almost to the maximum carrying capacity of the land. So this subdivision that I showed you was 133 lots on 48.36 acres, and it represents a density of 2.75. That's pretty efficient. What I'm going to show you probably wouldn't have a huge effect on that piece of property other than the fact that it could be a better community at the end of the day. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to show you another typical community in Ascension Parish. So this community today, I don't know if I can zoom out enough to catch it all. I can't. So today is 107 lots. They average 70 foot by 150 feet. It sits on 43.99 acres, and it represents a density of 2.43 units per acre. And so what I wanted to do was say, what if we changed the rules for development to allow a subdivision like this to get closer to three units an acre? What would you have to do? Well, logically, the first thing you'd have to do is allow a smaller lot size. Today, the only way to do that is through the PUD process. If you're going to allow a developer to build smaller lots, we as a community should want something back in return. And as a planner, a community designer, a landscape architect by degree, I think that we can design better communities in trade. So what we did is we created this set of rules, and these were handed to you guys at the beginning of the meeting. And so discussion of revisions to subdivision regulations talks about, if I was going to change the rules, to change the model for how subdivisions get developed, these are the rules that I would want to see come into play. So the first one is, total allowed units are calculated by utilizing net density. Net density is calculated by subtracting out all pipeline servitudes, right-of-ways, existing road right-of-ways, existing drainage servitudes, wetlands, and existing water bodies from the gross side area. No major subdivision will exceed a net density of three units per acre. Sounds familiar? We talked about this a couple of times. No more than 50% of a single lot width shall be allowed in any major subdivision. Table C defines the maximum allowed percentage of a single lot width within a subdivision. And I'm going to put it up here just for the four people at home that are watching. I'm crafting this development table. I've got it in three separate tables. If it was ever adopted, it would actually be one table, but I separated it out so you could sort of see the differences. This would be the table that if a developer wanted to come and develop a subdivision in Ascension Parish, they would have an idea of, if I want to build this width of lot, what are the expectations for what that subdivision has to be? And so it breaks down lot widths, percentage of total lots allowed, parking spaces required, parking location, lot area setbacks. We've revised our development table to say that no building will be closer to another building than 20 feet. Today, our code allows 10 feet. So we're doubling that distance. And the thought is that we've got rural fire protection in most areas of this parish. And if we can separate the buildings, perhaps we can save more if there's ever a major fire event. If you notice, percentage of total lots, it decreases as the lot size goes down. So as your lots get smaller in width, a lower percentage of the total number can be them. So if you're going to develop a 50-foot-wide lot subdivision, you can't have more than 50% of the lots be 50-foot wide. Now, I'm going to move this again because I want to get back to the rules. It sounds complicated, and it is. I don't want to pretend that you're just going to sit down and whip these things out because we're not drawing one street dead-end subdivisions here. We're talking about creating communities, and it takes a little bit more design effort to create a place. So the next rule is all major subdivisions must have at least three different lot widths. Why is that? Because we want more than one house type. We want to see more than just a Lego subdivision, that all the houses look exactly the same. No more than 20 lots of a single housing type shall be contiguous or face one another. Why is that? Same reason. Mix them up. Don't just create a cluster of all your 50s together, a cluster of all your 60s together, and all your 70s together. Mix them up. In cases where lot widths are mixed, block length listed in the table shall apply to the longer distance if there are at least 20% of the larger lots located in the block. It's a very T and D thing, but what it does is it says where you're breaking your block with parks or streets. It can be longer if the lots that are on them are wider because you have fewer houses on those blocks. Major subdivisions in rural or conservation zoning must preserve a 200-foot minimum buffer along any perimeter where adjacent large lot residential exists. If we're going to allow somebody in conservation zoning to build 50-foot lots, we want to preserve a 200-foot buffer, is that what I said? 200-foot buffer along the perimeter. So you don't have small lots adjacent to large lots, and that's going to be a natural buffer. Street interconnectivity is required to all phases of the project and to adjacent development or potential development where feasible. Connectivity, you know, buses, garbage, mail people, police, fire, connect to the subdivisions where possible. A pedestrian system is required in all major subdivision. Each lot must have a pedestrian connection to all recreation amenities in the subdivision. The pedestrian system may be a four-foot concrete sidewalk, an asphalt trail, or raised wooden boardwalk, or any combination there too. Mulcher gravel may be used in the natural areas of the project but will not count towards the recreational requirements due to the maintenance that's required to ensure they're usable in the future. Six acres per thousand population generated by the new major subdivision at a rate of 3.5 persons per household shall be provided as recreation and park space. Recreation space shall be defined as active recreation play areas, parks, trails, and passive play areas, wetlands, wet and dry stormwater ponds, and lands that are periodically inundated and unusable or not acceptable parks. Let's force developers to provide a space that's actually usable. And the other reason is, if you're allowing smaller lots, that means smaller yards. Those children are going to need a place to play. And if you're providing sidewalks, they have a safe way to get to those places to play. One street tree shall be planted along every street in a major subdivision located every 50 feet within eight feet of the edge of right-of-way but not closer than four feet to the sidewalk. Consistent tree, street tree species and size shall be planted on each individual street. Trees shall have a minimum 2.5-inch caliber and be at least eight feet tall after planting. We have a severe canopy deficiency in this parish. Drive through any subdivision and tell me what that subdivision's going to look like in 30 years. There's no trees. Each lot within the major subdivision shall have a minimum of two trees, minimum 2.5-inch caliper, and eight feet tall at time of planting. Once again, let's build a canopy in this parish. Trees greater than 24 inches that have been preserved may be counted toward the yard tree planting requirement at a ratio of two to one. For every one inch of tree that is preserved, you can reduce the number of trees that need to be planted by two inches. However, each lot must still have a minimum of one new tree planted. Today, we see many historic trees cut down for the sake of a development. And what I'm saying is the costs of cutting that tree down could be reduced if you preserve it and you don't have to plant a new tree in a lot. Maybe you plan your subdivision so you have a park where that tree is, or an open space, or a roundabout. Once again, this is not easy. It takes some time. You've got to figure things out. The developer must have a connection plan agreement with the parish for connection to the future parishwide sewer. This was, once again, drafted two and a half years ago when this was still just an idea. This is now becoming a reality, but it's still part of the rules. So let me get back to my real-world example and show you the implications of this. So here's the subdivision today. And once again, can't see it all, but trust me, it's, pretty much that's it. This is the version of it that's not... So when you're drafting, when you're designing a new subdivision, typically you don't get it right on the first shot. So it takes several layers. You know, we call them onion skin, we call them trash, we call them, you know, concepts. What I tried to do was take the rules that were drafted and develop a subdivision that meets all of them. So this was the first draft, and this is the second draft. And so what I did was I color-coded the lots. The orange lots are 50, the brown lots are 60, and the yellow lots are 70. So you can see I have three different lot sizes in this subdivision. I've got 2.7 acres of park, okay? In the before condition, once again, we had 107 lots, 70 by 150, 2.43 units per acre. In the after condition, I now have, where's my number? 2.69 acres of rec. I've got, what is my lot count? All right, let me, let me come back to the lot count. I've got 123 lots, so I gained 16 lots. 61 50s, 54 60s, and eight 70s. The development community is going to say, well, this subdivision costs too much money because I've got to now build sidewalks and I've got to plant street trees. So I tried to use a conservative number. An average sidewalk costs $3.30 a square foot to install. I took the linear foot of road in this project and I multiplied it times two because we're going to build a sidewalk on both sides. And then I multiplied it by four so that I could get the square foot of sidewalks. We're going to build 34,000 square feet of sidewalk at a cost of $112,000. If we're putting in three trees per lot, meaning one street tree and two yard trees, at 123 lots, that's 369 trees, and I did an average cost of $350 per tree installed. We're spending $130,000 on trees. So I've added the cost to this development of approximately $242,000. But I gained 16 lots. And on average, those lots are going to sell for $30,000. So I've gained $240,000 in net over what they had before. Now, if the developer community is going to argue, well, I don't want 50-foot lots, I want 60s, well, then the numbers are just going to be reflected where you've got more 60s than 70s, and maybe you put a 50 or an 80 in there to get your three-lot mix. But what I can tell you is, I got to three units an acre. I got to a lot mix that meets the code, and I gained money. I gained $240,000. Now, I had another example here that I'm going to save because we're going to have some opponents to this idea, and I just want to keep that in the pocket for if we want to continue. But what we were also doing, and with the help of Michael, I was able to create these things, is we want to create a code that's a little more visual so that people can understand what the ramifications are of creating smaller lots. And so while you and I may agree that, you know, we may never see these houses built in this parish, these are the types of envelopes that we're creating with these smaller lots. So this is on your chart. This is housing type H. All right, that's kind of hard to see, very dark. Housing type H, that's a 50-foot-wide lot that has two parking spaces, that has a covered garage behind the home. It's accessed from the front. This is not an alley product. This is from the front of your house. The minimum lot area is 6,250 square feet. The front setback is 18 feet. The rear setback is 20 feet. You've got 15-foot setback on one side, that's where your driveway is. You have five on the other. So as these houses laid themselves out, you would have the 15 and five continued, so you'd continue to have a 20-foot building separation. And that's what the house would look like in elevation form, from the front and the rear. And what we did is we did the next lot up, which is G. So that shows a front-load garage on a 50-foot-wide lot. And these houses are still 2,000, 2,000-plus square feet as you go up in stories. You fill the envelope with, with building, but you do it in a more effective manner. So this plan has 10-foot side setbacks, 20-foot rear setbacks, front parking access, and it's a 50-foot-wide lot. We are going to create these models, assuming we want to continue with this. For each of the housing types, we're going to create a block that shows what those housing types look like when they're all mixed together. Ultimately, what I'm trying to say here is, you can get to a better community design through changing the rules to get ultimately where we were trying to get with the PUD ordinance, but you shouldn't have to do a PUD to get a good community. And I can show that you, you gain money. You gain units, which in the, the big scheme of things is what developers are actively looking for. They're looking for more lots. Question?
Actually, I lived in a subdivision in California on a 50-foot-wide lot. We bought a home there. It was a small two-story home, 1,600 square feet. And the subdivision had different sized lots on a Lake Donald. You guys visited this once. And it worked perfectly well. The question might be, will it, will it work well here? How will the developers receive this? Will a developer want to, to develop a subdivision that will have homes of, of obviously different prices, different-priced homes in the same development? I loved it in California. It was California. And I, I would wish it would work here, and I think it's very interesting. I appreciate you doing what you did here, and I'd like to study this more, certainly.
Other questions?
So you said the density you came up with was about three, you know, per?
Yes, sir. For this one in particular, I didn't, I didn't net out anything. I didn't assume that there was drainage. I didn't assume that there were any servitudes that were going. I just, I took a gross number. And I got to three units an acre. And using the, the total side area, I got to a maximum of 123 units. And so using that 123 units was how I generated the amount of recreation space that was required, and then sort of worked backwards from there. And, you know, it's, it's like anything. It takes a little work. And I'm not going to say that this was a 15-minute project. But, you know, I think overall, the end result is better.
Is this concept with, say, 50-foot lots, that someone could combine two lots for a single residence?
Oh, sure. If you want to decrease density by doing that, we would not be opposed. I'm trying to give maximum density.
No, I understand what, I understand what you did here. I've seen developments with 25-foot lots so that you could buy two or three.
Right.
Or four lots, depending on the size of home you wanted to build.
I think if, I've lived in places that had this same kind of thing, like you see it in Atlanta and other places. If it gets introduced to this parish, I think it's going to create some excitement, in a good way.
Yeah.
I think the developers that, that have some creativity and some ingenuity are going to be way ahead of the game, and they're going to come in and people are going to flock to it. Commend you for doing this.
The question that Michael and I had, very specifically, do you allow standard subdivisions to continue? Or do you require all subdivisions to meet the new code?
You know, the sample, the example you took to, to make an example of had, was very restrictive. You couldn't do very much with that, and you did quite a lot with it. I think if you took a certain different ones, you, you could see a lot more imagination used.
Right. And once again, the standard, when you're laying out a subdivision, you start at the property line and you offset your lot width, depth rather. Then you offset your road width, then you offset your lot depth, and you sort of work into the middle. So for these exercises, I was working with something that someone had already done. So starting with a nice green piece of property, there are a lot of creative things that you can... can do with a subdivision to make interesting places. And, you know, the other example I've got, which I'm not going to show you, does just that, and it's more efficient, and it gains a half a million dollars for the developer. So I'm going to have a hard time saying that these ideas cost more money because good design solves that problem.
Would it be your intention in an existing subdivision, if somebody wanted to do an additional filing, they'd have to meet the new design criteria?
I think that's an interesting question. I think that I would probably go on the side of no, simply because that existing subdivision bought into an idea. And to go in and allow that guy to build smaller lots, while the homes may be more valuable, the perception is always smaller lots is worse. And so I would probably say future filings of existing subdivisions can meet the standards that they were when they were originally approved.
George, rather than not allowing the traditional subdivision, could we look at more incentives that would almost not dictate, but would drive people to this concept?
To me, the incentive is the bottom line, is density. Can I get to three units an acre? Can I get to two units an acre or one unit an acre with small lot development where my property is located? If you can do it with your standard development, and that's why I said with that original example, he was at 2.75 units per acre. Can I throw in some smaller lots and get him closer to three? He's probably only going to gain eight lots. Does that offset the costs? Probably not. It probably gets close to a balance. But in all cases, you know, all cases are not equal. But for the two I did, there was a significant bump in value.
What do you anticipate will be the objections to something like this?
What you just said is that developers are going to want to build single-lot subdivisions, one width. You know, I could bring newspaper articles where developers threw me under the bus saying that my ideas are all too expensive, and we don't want to build those communities here, and go back where you came from. So listen, I understand that it's a radical concept to allow somebody to build to their actual density without having to rezone to a PUD, but I think that we could get better communities in the end. You could get places that turn into places that people want to live into in decades as opposed to places that I believe in decades will be abandoned because there is no there there.
Now, if this is something that we ultimately wanted to do, what would be the process?
If you wanted to pursue this, my next step would be to take the language in the text document and to revise the subdivision regulations to make, and the development code, to make these the rules so that we could evaluate whether or not we wanted to go there. So, I mean, the next step for me would be to request the public hearing and present you guys with the code revisions to do that if you think they're good enough ideas.
Do we have to have a public hearing that puts it forward, or can we just have another discussion with some of the stuff you would develop?
We could have another, we could just leave it in the staff report section and just have another discussion if that's what y'all want to do.
Okay. Seems to me that this is fairly complex, and we ought to be very thoughtful about it, not rushed to judgment. I'd definitely like to see more.
Yeah, I agree.
Yes.
I like it. Good job. Okay, yeah. Thank you very much. Anything else in your staff report?
No, sir.
Okay, the next item is the engineering staff report.
Just to go over a few of the projects we have going on, there are now four projects in the bond period which have been constructed, and now they're constructing the houses on that. That'll bring 339 lots when they're all built out. And then there are currently four projects under the infrastructure. They're constructing the roads and the drainage and all at this time, and that'll bring another 399 lots online. There are a couple of projects that have been approved for construction, but they're waiting on, we're waiting for them to actually start construction, and that is another 103 lots. There are also four projects that are under review at this time, and when those are completed, there'll be another 226 lots. So that's a total of 1,067 lots. And then on commercial sites, we have 12 that are under review at this time, and there are 46 that we have approved to go to, well, the engineering has approved to go to construction. We approve it, and then that will go to the building department, and then they would issue the building permits to actually get it done.
All right. Any questions?
George, a lot of these are carried over from last month?
Uh, yeah, yeah. They're ongoing, and I'm not, especially the commercial sites that are ongoing, we've approved them, and I'm not aware of when they're completed and all. So there are a lot of, yeah, they're continued over.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, thank you very much. Item 13, adjournment. What's your pleasure?
Second.
Move second. No objection. Okay, we will adjourn, and we will begin the zoning commission meeting in, at five minutes after seven.
Can I share your?
You move.
Thank you.